Okay, well, we're gonna get started. Good afternoon. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board meeting Tuesday, October 16th, 2018. If you wish to speak during the hearing of citizens, please pick up a card in the back of the chambers, print your name and top it clearly, and return the card to our board assistant Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I will call you up to speak. First up is the flag salute. Please stand. Venice Middle School Color Guard under the direction of Commander Mike Dubruel. I'm gonna say that wrong. Thank you, Venice Middle School Color Guard. I do not believe our student representative, sometime, is there student representative here? Come on up. Perfect timing. Nathan Turoff? Come on up. Join us. You can walk right around this way. This is perfect timing. Have a seat. And I am just gonna ask you a little bit about yourself, so if you wanna press the button right in front of you, and I'll give, turn the light on red. Dr. Bowden, if you can.
Oh, that one.
Perfect. So, hello, welcome. Your name's David, I'm sorry, Nathan Turoff, and you're from which school?
I'm Pineview School.
Welcome, welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself? What year you are?
I'm a senior in my year. I'm currently in class office. I was requested to be here by my school counselor.
Wonderful. Well, I appreciate the honesty. And we have a certificate of appreciation for you joining us today, so I'll give that to you shortly. And again, I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to special presentations. To begin the special presentations, I'd like to invite Jennifer Vine, President of the Education Foundation of Sarasota County, up to the podium, please.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. We just wanted to, can you hear me? It says it's on.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's on. They control it from the back room. It's on.
It's on.
We trust you. We can hear you.
Okay. So, I just wanted to share with you a new initiative that we're actually getting ready to launch, one that I think you are very familiar with, but it has a new face to it. Since 1994, the Education Foundation has been a recipient for the Education Florida Specialty Tags. Ones that I think you're very familiar with, support education that you can purchase through your tax collector's office. We've raised over, throughout the state, collectively through the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations, over $13 million for the specialty tags, and we felt it was time for a redesign. So, I'll turn it over to Jennifer Sams, our Director of Marketing and Communications.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. So, like Jennifer said, we sat on the Consortium of Florida Education Foundation statewide committee to do the redesign. They worked with a professional agency out of Gainesville to conduct some extensive market research and to make the determination to do the redesign. Twenty dollars of each tag purchase or renewal comes back to the Education Foundation and then directly supports Sarasota County students and teachers, of course. So, it funds things like our grants program, professional development, STEM, arts education programs, and our college career life readiness initiative.
See if we can pull up the new design, just so that you all can see it. And then we're gonna launch a campaign with the tax collector's office, but we wanted you all to see it first. So, that's the new tag. And then, did you advance it to, are we able to advance, to go, let's just pop it to the, right there. And then, that actually was taken on Siesta Key Beach with some of our local students, and that will be part of the statewide campaign for the relaunch. So, we just wanted to make sure you all had the information, but we're super excited about the new tag. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Excited. Next, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Next is the recognition of Hispanic heritage, Sonia Ferrer Albert, Executive Director of People Support Services. To the podium, please. Yay!
Hey, good afternoon, Madam Chairman, School Board members, Mr. Hardy, Dr. Bowden, student representative, and community at large. With me this afternoon, I have Mr. Jamie Rodriguez. Our division is very large. We cover many support services directed to our schools, and we're here to give you an update of the celebration that began in our school September 15th, and it ended yesterday, celebrating the month of La Hispanidad. So, just a brief summary of what our schools have been doing and our partners with agencies in our community. Jamie?
Good afternoon, all. I wish to read from the 2018 Presidential Proclamation on National Hispanic Heritage Month. During the National Hispanic Heritage Month, which concluded yesterday, and keeping in the spirit, we honor all American citizens of Hispanic descent and celebrate their rich and vibrant traditions of faith, family, hard work, and patriotism. We are grateful for the innumerable contributions they make to our society, which are vital to our thriving nation. In our district, there are 2,500 English-language learners in our system, of which 70% are of Hispanic heritage. That is 1,760 students. Many of our schools and teachers have celebrated this month at their schools and classrooms with parents, events for the parents, culturally responsive lessons for students that embrace our differences. Unidos Now has partnered with many of our district schools at the academic levels, at all academic levels, using the two-generation approach to respond to the needs of our Hispanic families by promulgating their ongoing contributions to our community and society, and through education and leadership development of students and parents. And I wish to introduce Ms. Luz Corcuera from Unidos Now. She is the Executive Director for the program.
Thank you, Jamie. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share with you the work of Unidos Now. It is a non-for-profit organization that was founded in 2010, just to respond to the growing Latino population in Sarasota and Manatee Counties. You may know that in the past ten years, the growth of the Latino population has been 350%, and kindergarten enrollment is almost at 37% in Sarasota. So, that is giving us an indication that the trend is upwards. Unidos Now's mission is to empower Latinos to achieve the American dream through education, integration, and civic engagement. To that extent, we have created several programs that work with the whole family. As you heard from Jamie, the family values is one of the most important values in the Latino community. And so, we work not only on a two-generation model, and I can see my friend John Anis in the audience, who was instrumental in launching our programs. We have these discussions about doing a multi-generational facet, because we have grandparents and parents and relatives that are involved in the decisions that the students are going to make. We are so grateful for the partnership that we have with the school district in Sarasota County. We have now programs at elementary school, middle school, and high school levels. Our idea is to create a culture of higher learning for all ages. And in doing so, we need to work with the parents, because no matter what we say to the kids, they go home, and the parents, if they don't understand, they can support their choices. I just wanna give you an example of a program that we have that is very successful, the Future Leaders Academy. In the past four years, we have empowered students to pursue higher education, and they have gone to colleges, not only in Florida, but selective colleges outside of the state of Florida. Just last year, 25 of our students were accepted into colleges, and 40% of them went to selective colleges on full scholarships. They made together, combined, over $1.5 million in scholarships and grants. And two of our students were Quizbridge Scholars, going right now in the fall semester to Amherst and Haverford College, and one is student from Pineview that we helped with other community members to go to Yale University on a full scholarship. So, the impact of our work is being felt right now at all levels, and we wanna continue empowering these families to pursue the American dream. We need a well-educated generation who are gonna be our future leaders. I thank you for acknowledging that the Latino population is growing rapidly in Sarasota County. I also understand that you're looking at the importance of having bilingual education, because the primary form of learning for all of us whose English is not the mother tongue is in Spanish. And so, it is important that we foster that type of approach to education and ensure that our kids and their parents can thrive in this environment. Thank you so much for your support, and thank you for celebrating Hispanic heritage. It's not over yet. On October 22nd, which is Monday, we have Noche Latina at the West Coast Black Theater on the beautiful rooftops, so you are all invited to join us. It's gonna be a two-hour event. Some of the Latino restaurants are going to showcase their food, Tapas Style, an open bar with celebrity bartenders, and some entertainment from the students. So, thank you so much for having me this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Very well. And that concludes special presentations. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Bowden?
Yes, first I'd like to introduce to you Joe Hayes. He's our officer on duty this evening. Joe is the former school resource officer at Booker High School. We hired Joe despite him graduating from the University of Florida with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He has 31 years of law enforcement experience, four with the Alachua County Sheriff's Office, and 27 here with our local sheriff's office here in Sarasota. Eighteen years of experience included investigations and 13 in patrol-related functions. Joe, we'd like to welcome you to our police department. We would certainly be remiss if we didn't take a moment to highlight the wonderful work that takes place in our school lunch programs. It is school lunch week. I know a number of our board members have signed up to be celebrity servers, guest servers, in our school cafeterias, but great work takes place in our cafeterias every day. Breakfast, lunch, and in many cases, dinner for our students. And not just the 180 days of school, but we bridge holidays and throughout the summer. And the reach of that program is not just Sarasota County. We reach out to other counties with our extended feeding. And so, this week in particularly, we just wanna highlight the great work of our school lunch programs. I wanna share with you a personal experience. Part of having a child in a speech and debate club is a responsibility that you serve as a judge when they go to competitions. My daughter at Sarasota High School had the opportunity this weekend to participate in her first speech and debate competition. One of the rules for judges is that you cannot judge your child's school, which means I was not able to serve as a judge in any event that involves Sarasota High School. But fortunate for me, both Pineview and Riverview High School were also in attendance at that competition. You know, we spend a lot of time talking about the things that need to be fixed, or the things that need to be addressed in our school district, and I just wanna highlight those kids who gave up their Saturday. We spent eight hours at Dixie Hollins High School up in St. Petersburg. Very, very well represented. I will tell you that they do not tell you the schools of the students that compete, but I had the opportunity to judge three different events, and kids from Pineview finished first in two of those events, but it was no bias, 'cause I didn't know they were from Pineview until we got to the award ceremony, and we recognized their great work. But I just wanna recognize particularly the advisors who take on that speech and debate, but the kids that have dedicated themselves to that at Riverview, Sarasota, and Pineview. And this is just the beginning. It's like a league. They will be competing throughout the year and have the opportunity to go to national competitions. So, we're real excited about what's going on with our speech and debate kids. The last, before I conclude the superintendent's report, I had the opportunity to forward to you a letter that we received from the State College of Florida. That letter put in writing the understanding of a telephone conversation that I shared with you at our last board meeting. So, I had the opportunity to forward that out to you. I hope you've had a chance to look at it. Certainly, there was not a surprise in the letter, but just wanted to touch bases again on dual enrollment, specifically just to reiterate our commitment to dual enrollment, in that we will continue to work to provide opportunities for our kids. I wanna make sure that SCF's position has been well articulated, and that they will continue to serve our kids on their campuses and through online. And we will continue to seek partners that wanna come onto our campuses for dual enrollment. But just wanted to give you a short update there, that we have reached out to a number of partners. It's an issue that we continue to work, but our commitment to dual enrollment is unwavering. And that concludes our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Bowden. Mrs. Brown?
I just wanted to thank that you introduced us to Officer Hayes here. And I think even last week, there was still, you know, a TV program where they were talking about our officers and saying how you just won't be able to get qualified officers in the time that you're looking. And I don't think anybody could have heard what Officer Hayes, with the 27 years with the sheriff's office, you know, on the SWAT team, and had been a school resource officer, and a member of the Florida Association of School Resource Officers, and the National Association of School Resource Officers. You are a prime example of what the kind of officers that we are getting. We are getting ones that have been an officer, a school resource officer before, that have experience in the field, and that still wanna come and serve. And we appreciate you coming, and I'm glad we are again able to reiterate the kind of quality candidates that we're getting and we're placing in our schools. Thank you, Officer Hayes.
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker?
I just wanted to talk quickly about the school lunch program. I was at Alta Vista yesterday, and if anything will give you a charge, you look at those little kids that come in through the line. Hi, 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 hi. And you're like, oh, they're all over the place. And what do you want to eat? Ah, this. And then the thank yous, and the pleases, and it was phenomenal. I have two bruises to show that I was actually working and letting trays. And I have, Wednesday I'll be at Cranberry, and Thursday I'll be at Venice Elementary. I just love this time of the year when I have an opportunity to go in and serve lunch for our little ones. I mainly stay at the elementary schools, because I just love seeing them. And all my grandkids are old now. The youngest is 13, so I enjoy our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that someone else dressed up as a milk carton.
I was a milkman.
So, take, I wanted to see a picture. Anyhow, just, I couldn't let that go. And that concludes superintendent's report. We will move on now to the hearing of citizens. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the time flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you'll need to begin to summarize. You must, excuse me, you must stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note that respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting, whether you agree or disagree with the speaker. You should listen politely, respectfully, without making any sounds of approval or disapproval. I have one card, Dr. Washington Hall. Hole? Am I saying that right? Hill. I am sorry. It's your curse. I can't go a meeting without butchering someone's name. It's just, I apologize.
I will say, Carolyn, you need to come by the hospital and get your bruises looked.
Get my what?
Bruises.
Your bruises.
Oh, my bruises. No, you can't.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Bowden, members of the school board, and other school administrators. I am Dr. Washington Hill, Senior Physician at the Florida Department of Health, and on staff in delivering babies at Sarasota Memorial Hospital for the last 25 years. I'm concerned about the health of pregnant and non-pregnant school students. I am a member of the SEAS's advocacy group. Other members are sitting in the back. Try as I can, I do not understand why the room at Riverview High School cannot be used in some way that we could all agree on, as it has in the past, as a school-based health center, or SBHC. It is now being used for storage. The SEAS's advocacy group has been told that it is because of a school board policy. We requested to review the policy, but have not received it. As far as we can determine, there is no policy that precludes the use of this space as a health clinic. We requested an answer from both Riverview High School Administration and the Supervisor of Health Services, and thus far, all we have been told is that it is being discussed at the district level. That is why I am here. We would appreciate your feedback. School-based health centers are functioning in nearby counties such as Pinellas. The option presented of providing transportation to appointments for teenagers and their children at the Health Department is not the same as an effective health clinic. I understand there is an upcoming meeting on October 23rd between the Health Department and the superintendent to discuss this issue. As requested during our previous conversations, the following is the array of services that the Health Department would like to see performed at the Riverview High School Health Center. These services include prenatal checks by a nurse, postpartum checks of the SEAS's patients, family planning, well-child checkups, immunizations for both mother and child, follow-up of the SEAS's patients that are at the Riverview High School, and most importantly, collaboration with school nurse, school social worker, and guidance counselors. Let me be clear. The goal of getting the clinic services reinstated is increased care and coordination of health services for pregnant and parenting students and their children, and increased school attendance. This requires little or no financial commitment from the school. Having these services on-site would result in increased physical health, reduction in absenteeism, and reduction in subsequent teenage births. These are critical issues for the success of students presenting, or pregnant, or parenting or not, and their children. The Health Department and the FQHC are both supportive of this effort, and I look forward to hearing the results of the October 23rd meeting that you have with Chuck Henry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Hill. I know, I'll ask a question to the superintendent really quickly, because I know that this has been asked before. And I don't know if you have the information now, or if there's something can be brought forward as to when Riverview was, when it changed to be a health clinic to storage, and what the policy is currently. And again, I know I'm giving you this at last minute, but what's that status, if we know?
And so, first of all, the room is not being used for storage. I was in the room week before last. The sign that designates it as a clinic has been removed from the outside, just so there's not confusion amongst the general student population at Riverview High School. There is a functioning clinic in the adjacent building that is staffed with both the school and Health Department personnel. And so, the specific nature of the appointment on the 23rd is to get the interest in the Health Department in providing services from that space. I do not believe it's the function of the school district to operate that clinic, but if the Health Department had an interest in providing services and accepting responsibility, what you might receive at a future board meeting is a facilities use agreement that designates that area as a clinic to be operated by the health clinic, where they would be responsible for any services that are provided there. I think it would be important to wall that off and make sure we understand what the responsibilities of our school district are, and what the responsibilities of the Health Department are. And Mr. Henry is certainly interested in entering into that conversation with you, and so I will certainly keep you posted after that. I want to make sure that we are also supporting the educational mission of Riverview High School, and that we're making sure that the services that we offer there are supplementary, and that we're all working towards the same goal, which is making sure that these young ladies are graduating from high school with healthy babies and educated in their role as a parent.
Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mrs. Brown, did you have?
Well, I appreciate Dr. Hill bringing this forward, and, 'cause I know he's been very concerned about the information going on in the background. But I've also heard, and I don't know if it's just Riverview or if it's some of the other school, that there's been a problem, or some changes in the way that we're even providing sex education in some of our schools. I know what it used to be like, and now they're saying they're not even getting somebody from the Health Department, and that it's, some of these teachers are saying it's very difficult to provide sex education. So, as long as you're talking with the Health Department and the teachers, or the schools about this, perhaps you can add that to your list of things you're talking about, and what kind of sex education it used to be versus what it is now?
Certainly.
Who provides it? I think it's the Department of Health that provides it.
It's explicitly listed in our policy, that that's the only people who can.
And so, is it the will of the board that I enter into a conversation with the Health Department about expanding sex education to our students?
Yes.
I thought it was, I thought the question was, what are they providing, right?
No, are they still providing sex education? And, 'cause I heard from a teacher, a PE teacher, they're saying they're not getting it anymore. So, if...
You're looking for a status report on our current program.
Yeah, status on the current program, not asking to...
No expansion until we know the status.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Everyone lit up, and then they went away. So, okay. Mrs. Zucker?
Yeah. You talked about a clinic in the other building?
Yeah.
So that's just a regular clinic for the whole of high school. And what we're talking about is a specific clinic in the SEASIS building.
Well, I spoke specifically to why the sign was removed from outside. It's no longer functioning as a clinic. It is not being used from a storage, but the sign was taken down so that there was not confusion amongst the general population at which you said, please report to the clinic and they're banging on a locked door. The functioning clinic is in the adjacent building.
Why did the clinic go away in the first place?
I can't answer that question for you. That's part of the history lesson that I'm trying to put together.
And also, what policy is it that is preventing us from offering health services at the SEASIS program? What policy is Dr. Hill referring to?
I've been able to find no policy that prohibits what he proposes.
So I also, and Dr. Hill and I spoke as well and I did do some research and I know that our policy doesn't have any explicit prohibit, that would prohibit that. I guess where I think is important to be very clear and define on what was there before, what is it that we're looking to continue or reinstate, if that is, and also, you know, if you're blending in to the conversation, a very, and I will believe, a very sensitive topic as it relates to any sexual education and our policy is very clearly states who is eligible to teach those courses and what specifically is in those courses. That is very explicit in our policy. So, and it is the health department that we contract with. So if it would, because I don't want it to be, I mean, I think this should be a very transparent discussion and if there is a need to expand the services that were once taken away, I'm not sure what those were, if that is after your fact-finding mission is something you could bring back to the board. So no decisions or changes would be made. My concern is that if there is nothing that would prohibit it or not, that something else is reinstated and the board just be aware of what that is. That's all. Very good. Mrs. Zucker.
How does this SEASIS program compare to the Northport SEASIS program? I'd like an update on what's happening at the Northport SEASIS program. Because we've all been focusing on.
We have a workshop coming forward.
We like a workshop.
Yep. Okay. Good. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. I do actually have another card. Haley Landry? And I think it's a dual, we'll make an exception. Come on up.
Hello. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Haley Landry. I'm a junior at River View High School.
My name is Maddie Viera. I am a senior at Booker. I recently just transferred from River View. And if I may, to answer your question on the status of sexual education, we do not get it at all. So, there you go.
No sex education.
So, we're here because we are the presidents of a chapter in Sarasota called Student Stand Up, which aims to raise political awareness of students in Sarasota. We are a bipartisan organization. We have a program at Booker, FSU, FSU London, UF, and we're trying to get one at River View. First, I just want to talk about something that I would like to put in our schools for a few weeks. It's kind of a project that I've been working on. So recently Gabby Gifford's contacted me. I don't know if you guys knew who she is. She's, yeah. Her and her nonprofit organization just did a huge rally across the nation and they chose Sarasota to be one of the places where the rally occurred and they contacted me to run it. And they gave me a statue of, the whole thing was gun violence and bringing awareness to gun violence and trying to register our younger populations to vote. So they sent me a statue of a little girl hiding under a desk. It's very morbid, but on top of the desk it has gun violence statistics for children in America and it has a number that you can text, a short code to text to vote. And I think it'd be really great if we would be able to, as Student Stand Up, put that statue in each of our schools for a few weeks to kind of raise political awareness as well as get the conversation going about voting in November.
So just to kind of build off of what she said, there is no plaque on the statue that is in any relation to Gabby Gifford's. So the statue does quite literally look bipartisan as well. So that should not be an issue. It's also very movable. It's very light. We can transport it just to us, too. I already talked to my principal, Dr. Shelley, about it and she seemed very, very happy and willing to have the statue put into our school, but we just wanted to see how you guys feel about that as well. And then also trying to get Student Stand Up into more of our schools. I believe Dr. Shelley worded it as like becoming like a countywide sort of awareness thing?
Initiation.
Initiation, yes. Thank you. So, yeah, that's what we would like to do. We just, we're trying to educate people on politics, getting them to vote and stuff, just in light of everything that has been happening in politics. It's very important for us students to have a political say because a lot of us are underage so we can't vote. So the whole point of the club is to allow us to raise awareness and raise awareness.
That's the problem when you go up together, you don't have the combined six minutes. If you had anything else you wanted to finish up, by all means.
I just wanted to say that we are backed right now by the Democratic Party of Sarasota. We're trying to get backed by the Republican Party of Sarasota. The Democratic Party of Sarasota is on board to coming in and giving presentations to our students as well as offering internships to our students and we're trying to get that with the Republican Party of Sarasota as well.
And the ACLU also has offered us support, stuff with security as well as volunteering opportunities.
Wonderful. Thank you. I know that there is a process as it relates to any organization coming into our schools that we have. Dr. Boden, I don't know if you want to speak to that or?
Well, I think there's really two elements here at play. One is the formation of a club. There's a formalized process which students can control what clubs are offered on their campus. And so, it's not that the district proposes or says every school should have a club, but if there's a group of students at a school site that wishes to start a club, I encourage them to reach out to their principal who can walk them through that process. It involves coming up with a charter, some bylaws, and an advisor and working through the principal to get it approved as one of the clubs there on campus. And so, that's something that would take place individually on each of those campuses, but like I said, it just takes a spark. So there needs to be a kind of a student point person on each campus and then recruit yourselves an advisor and you'll be well on your way. In regards to, I appreciate your clarification because I think you started to lead me down a political path and then you brought me back to more of a neutral place. And so, I'd like to spend a little more time understanding exactly what it is you're proposing, is that we try to make sure our schools remain apolitical. I do want to commend you on the work that you're doing in our community and most of that work has taken place outside of the school day and I think it adds power to it is that it's one thing to get students to rally during the school day. It's another thing to get them to do it on their own time and show up on a Saturday. But let's spend a little more time so I understand exactly what the ask is and to make sure that we are being completely apolitical on this.
Very good. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boden. That concludes hearing of citizens. That will move us on to, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda, Dr. Boden?
Yes, there are two addendums to item seven, approval of the instructional classified personnel report. That was added after the agenda was made available to the public. And I also want to, although it's not part of the consent agenda, item number 37, the pupil progression plan, has been pulled from today's agenda.
Thank you very much. With that, is there a motion for?
I move for approval of the motion as amended.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments or any items pulled for comments? I see none. Very good. Members, can please vote on the consent agenda as amended.
Oops.
The motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Moving on to new business, item number 34. Is there a motion?
I would move that the school board adopt the entire package of the proposed 2019 legislative program of the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments? Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I still think, and this is like the second or third time we've done this since I'm on the board, I think this is kind of stuff that needs to go in front of a workshop. I've said this before. And there's things in here, like I remember reading articles where it talked about charter schools and talked a little bit about schools that get the tax credit scholarship, how they had lax accountability, they didn't have to follow the same rules and laws that public schools had to do. But yet, when I read this, it's, I read those articles and it makes me think we need additional accountabilities on those schools. But on this, it says they want those same rules to be waived for public schools to go the opposite way. And it's, I mean, personally, I'd rather see additional accountability on those schools. I think that was the point of those articles that the Orlando Sentinel did and some other people did. There was a thing in there about paper exams. But we talked about, you know, about how it's going to delay when we're going to get results back. And so these are the kind of things that, you know, I want to talk to staff about, how extending the option for paper exam, how it's going to affect us. There's something in there about not having to, piggybacking on the earlier conversation today, of being able to take the FSA test in a language other than English for ELL learners. And, you know, what impact does that have on students who, you know, start in first grade and then take the third grade reading, but not in English? So can they really read in English and what, you know, what issues that, does that create or cause? And I understand if you're ELL, it's, you know, easier for you to take in your native language, but I'm, I feel like these are the kind of questions that need to be vetted out with staff and through a workshop process. I don't feel comfortable right now saying that, that I would be happy if I came back and found out that instead of holding more schools accountable, we lessened those regulations, we extended paper tests, that we allowed people to take third grade reading in something other than English and what effect, and the E in ELA is English. But I don't know enough to know what the impact of those things are. And so I really sincerely hope that, I'm going to vote it down simply because I don't understand the impact of all these things that are coming in front of us and they could be detrimental to the educational process.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I just would like to mention that this is the proposed legislative platform for the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards. We are a member of that organization. We are asked in this meeting to actually approve it. If there is one of the coastal counties that are involved in this consortium that votes this down, then it's done. It's not voted in favor. And we're not asked at this point in time, or we're not being asked to make any changes to this. Largely, it is very much similar to what we had last year and I did attend a two-day conference in Port St. Lucie two weeks ago where we discussed this information. I would just say that the consortium of coastal counties are the large counties that start in Pinellas, skip Manatee, go from Sarasota down around Monroe, Miami Dade, and come up to Indian River County. We have 50% of the students, 50% of the funding, 50% of the legislative delegations in these coastal counties. And every year, they have a duck soup approach, Eric, I would say, to what is important. We meet with a couple of times a year. I happen to serve as secretary treasurer of this particular organization and we will meet again in, at the legislative time in March, April in Tallahassee. So I would just say that Miami Dade has a lot of interest in this that we don't have and other counties have a lot of interest that we don't have, but it is kind of the duck soup, or shall I say, the large salad at the buffet table approach. And so we really are not looking at, I think, to approve everything in it, but really to acknowledge it and say, okay, go forward and then we'll take our own legislative platform, which as you know, is much smaller and more indicative of Sarasota County and go forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Zucker.
There are really just four issues that are priorities. Respect the constitutional authority of school boards and the funding issue. Allocate sufficient total funds with flexibility to enable school districts to support guaranteed continuation budgets that provide for enrollment changes. And the next one is capital outlay funding. We've asked for, to restore the full 2.2 mils for the capital levy, which we have asked for every year, so it's not a change. And the fourth one is student safety and mental services. Determine and fully fund the state mandate of one officer per school by increasing the safe school allocation. And it's all about the Guardian program and safe schools. That is the priority of the Florida, of the Greater Consortium. The other issues in here are just additional priorities. They're not priorities for, that will be on the platform. They are priorities to educate our legislators, but they're not, they're not part of the priorities.
Very good. Thank you very much. If there are no additional comments, members, want to please vote on the motion before you?
I'd like to back.
And the motion passes three to two. Moving on to the next item, new business, item number 35. Is there a motion?
Yes. Hold on a minute. I would move that the school board authorize payment in the amount of $4,742.50 to the law firm of shoe banker, Loop Kendrick, as reimbursement of attorney's fees incurred by school board member Jane Goodwin in connection with her successful defense of a suit brought against her by Transparency for Florida.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. And for comments, Mrs. Goodwin.
I did discuss this motion with Art Hardy, our lawyer, as to whether I should vote on this or recuse myself and the answer was that I should vote.
Thank you for the clarification. Mrs. Brown?
It'd be noted that I did not hire an attorney, so I'm not putting in any attorney's fees, but I did talk to the attorney that Jane had, asking where they were going and because of the actions that her attorney and Mr. Hammett's attorney took, I didn't need one because the suit was dismissed. So I just wanted to let somebody, because I know there was some disagreement in the community or misunderstanding that Mr. Hardy was representing me. That was not the case. We were told we had to get outside legal representation and I was kind of dragging my feet on that and it turned out just fine because Jane had got a service that took care of it before I needed to.
Thank you. I, yeah, I had asked a lot of questions, nothing on anyone personal, I just have had, received a lot of questions and rightfully so. And I know there is an invoice for this, that was one question that should be attached so that can be made available, should be required. My only question is, and similar to the prior one that we had to approve, there were two separate ones. My question would be, and again, I'm sorry, Mrs. Goodwin, in the circumstance we have to discuss this, but I know Dr. Boden, as of Friday, mentioned that there was additional discussions on public records of such and you were working with your attorney. Is this the final bill?
Yes.
So there is no additional?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. If there are no additional questions or comments, that's, members, please vote on the motion before you. And the motion passes five to zero. Any additional comments? Mrs. Brown?
I just wanted to thank the superintendent and our staff for bringing forward this morning a plan on dealing with the scores that were in our elementary schools. We had some surprising scores where some of our scores went down and the staff has come back with an action plan on ways we're going to turn all of those around. And I wanted to thank you for bringing that all forward to us, giving us a better explanation of that and letting us know what the plans are and how we're digging in and going to be turning that around for next year. I want to thank you for that and anyone who wanted to see that, they can go to our website and listen to that discussion that we had this morning.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Doug Griffin, who's sitting in the audience pretending not to pay attention, but he always does, who is one of our great supporters and followers of all things here. He's a wonderful resource in our community and is involved in SURE and involved in Rotary's clubs and scholarshiping for Rotary's. But Doug brought to my attention a re- Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Doug Griffin, who's sitting in the audience pretending not to pay attention, but he always does, who is one of our great supporters and followers of all things here. He's a wonderful resource in our community and is involved in SURE and involved in Rotary's clubs and scholarshiping for Rotary's. But Doug brought to my attention a restorative strategies seminar at USF a couple, three weeks ago, because we didn't have anything to do on Saturday, right, Doug? So we went to a restorative strategies workshop, and I wanted to mention it today at our workshop, but there wasn't time for that, and I will do that. But what I gained, one of the big takeaways for me in that day was that, you know, restorative strategies is for everyone, and it's not just about discipline, and it's not just about when things are going badly, but it's also something that's really good to implement and to enjoy. I mean, our school board could probably even do our own circle at some point in time, but at any rate, I...
We'll get to that first.
But I will say that. And the other thing is that the Superintendent and I actually met with some people from the PTA yesterday, and we talked to them since we don't have, we have actually one school that is a PTA, part of the PTA, and it's Inglewood, and we talked about perhaps getting them involved in some of our Title I schools, because they have best practices for fundraising and other things, and would be very helpful to some of those parent groups who may not have the know-how and the wherewithal to do that. But secondly, they are really good at advocacy, and that's what I've been thinking, is if we could just get our parent group more involved in advocacy, that would be a really wonderful thing. So I mentioned that.
Thank you. Yes, PTOs. I have meant to bring this up at the last meeting, and I apologize for the delay, but it's never a bad time to congratulate our staff and share good messages. So Doug, our Governor Rick Scott wrote a letter to all of Sarasota County, and if I may, read it. It says, "Dear Mrs. Ziegler, congratulations to the students, faculty, and staff of the Sarasota County School District on earning an A district grade for the 2017-2018 school year. Thank you for giving our students a great public education and helping them live out their dreams in Florida. Thank you to our hard-working teachers and school administrators. Our state continues to be a national leader in education. As Governor, I take seriously our responsibility to provide all Florida students access to a world-class education that prepares them to succeed in college, career, and beyond. I am proud of, proud that since 2001, the funding for K-12 public schools has increased by 4.5 billion. I grew up in a family that struggled to make ends meet, and I know that education is life-changing. I credit the K-12 education I received with giving me the academic foundation I need to reach my goals and ultimately provide for my family. We are working to make Florida the best state in the nation to get a great education so that all Florida students have the opportunity to achieve their dreams. I encourage you and your students to continue setting goals, working hard, and being involved in your community, and I am confident your efforts will provide many great opportunities for a successful and promising future. Once again, congratulations and best wishes for many more great years to come." So I wanted to make sure I shared that to the community and staff, as they are truly responsible for the success of this district. So with that, announcements, next policy review work session is November 6 at 2018 at 4:00. Next regular scheduled board meeting is November 6, 2018, at 6:30. There are no additional comments. We are adjourned.
We're doing your stuff, right, Jane? We're doing your stuff, right?
Four and five.
Yeah, we're doing that stuff.
Four and five.
We're doing that stuff.
Four and five.
We're doing that stuff.
You know, I'm going to wait.